All the call the regular schedule of city council meeting to order first the month of November. Thank everyone for coming, our citizens and everyone that's watching along. Thank you for joining. We'll start with normal fashion with our prayer, follow our by our pledge. Uh, Mr. Woods, can you lead us in prayer?
Yes. I find heaven give me thank you and pray you so much for all of your many blessings. Thank you again and also for another Monday night you allowed us to come together. We pray oh God for the Holy Spirit to guide us all tonight. We ask that you bless America, bless this council, bless each department here, bless every worker. God we did thank you now for keeping us safe as we strive to do the best job we can do. This we pray in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
You face the flag before I pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. If you will call the uh, roll Ms. Clerk.
Mr. Brown?
Here.
Mr. Golden?
Here.
Ms. Lao? Ms. Ray Kenny?
Here.
Ms. Miller?
Here.
Ms. Ray?
Here.
Ms. Williams?
Here.
Ms. Wood?
Alright, if you guys would be in prayer for uh, Ms. Lao, his family, his wife. She's been in the hospital um, with some complications and stuff, so if y'all would be praying for, praying for her. And maybe send a text to let you know you uh, we missed the night and praying for. Alright, uh, starting with my reports, we we offices will be closed uh, the twenty eighth and the twenty ninth for Thanksgiving. That's a Thursday and Friday, so I want to say happy Thanksgiving to everyone and enjoy your families for Thanksgiving. Um, small town big Christmas starts December the first, light show, uh, December seventh is the Christmas parade. Uh, so if everyone would help us spread the word, we still take applications of you know, if anyone would like to be a part of our Christmas parade. We will uh, be excited to have them. There's no particular theme this year other than Christmas. So however you want to celebrate Christmas or whatever theme you want to bring, you're welcome to do that. So that's on December the seventh at six for you.
That the parade?
The parade, yeah, uh-huh.
Okay.
Alright, then after that will the festivals and all that stuff start out Dylan probably speak more than his report. Um, wanna uh, invite all our um, council members to come and join the Christmas, well, and join the employees for our Christmas party and celebration. This year we're doing it at Hub City and Jackson, it's an event center there in Jackson at the end of Riverside and Airways, I think it's Airways, but they have like a little bowling alley and uh, pickleball, cornhole. It's a little event center that is real nice, so if you guys would like to come out, we're gonna be there from twelve till uh, three. So the off, city offices will be closing at eleven to give everybody us time to get there and do all that. It's a Wednesday? It's Wednesday.
What, what day is it?
December the fourth.
Fourth is on Wednesday.
And I, uh, yes sir, matter of fact, right down the street from you off.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I say see if the judge will let you get out.
Right.
Uh, and I'll have care of both to send y'all a uh, like a invite or something with the address and all that stuff. Twelve, uh, yes sir. Alright, uh, we'll have longevity checks that we give out to the employees that day as well. Alright, uh, I got a, I'mma add this to my report that I just got this in, like five o'clock. We uh, I got nothing. Here, that's one, two, three. We got um, as y'all go, we gave you, gave you guys an update on the uh, YMCA proposal, uh, YMCA uh, project and sports flex. We've been talking about uh, building a new building out across from the ballparks at Pleasant Run. Since that has happened a la, here, I guess recently, within the last month or so, uh, the potential, uh, the National Guard Armory is going up for sale. Um, they're closing, I don't know, I think it's seven uh, armories across the state. And Bolivar is one of the ones that they're closing and that building is going up for sale and the county, I think, is gonna get the first option to purchase. And then we will be in line next to do that. I've been talking back and forth with Mayor Paul, so I think they have some ideas, I don't know for sure if they uh, wanna do that or have the funds to actually purchase it. Um, but I have expressed to him that we are interested in it. I spoke to General Ross also to let them know, Representative Shaw, Senator Waller, that we, I say we, I'm hoping we, I'm interested in it. Uh, I'm bringing this to us, this to, this to y'all tonight to get uh, a non-approval to buy anything like that, to just some type of uh, agreement that we would be interested in entertaining us purchasing that building to potentially do uh, YMCA youth programs and after school programs, gymnasium, parks and rec. The same thing that we was looking at doing at the Pleasant Run site, but at this site here, um, and we probably looking at half the cost, if not less than that. Potentially, the building is already there, it's in a pretty decent shape, um, but this is a very rough draft. I mean, to see, uh, they, engineers put that together, like literally just put that together, cause I want to give y'all a visual of what it potentially could be. Uh, we did tour it with the uh, representatives from the Y and it would work, it works for them. They are um, they, they like the building. It fits for what they, now we will have to do some remodeling rehab, stuff like that, but it will fit their potential uh, pro- programs and plans of services and stuff. So basically, I just wanted that, wanted to show y'all that, to let y'all know um, what I was entertaining and if you guys had any questions or concerns. Um, if, if there was enough support, I would like to have some type of motion or something to say that, that I could keep negotiating and going back and forth with this project. But like I said, there's not to buy anything, I don't know what the price gonna be, don't know when it's gonna even be actually up for sale. But I did wanna bring this to y'all, cause I don't wanna be doing this work and then we get to the end and I bring it to y'all and y'all say, no, we don't wanna do that. So uh, basically that's, you know, I know it's gonna, we, this is the first step of many, but potentially they, we could do this same project that we were looking at, at the other site for a whole lot cheaper, we could get it done quicker, the building is there. Um, instead of sending vacant, we could put some good use to it and you know.
How much land go there?
It's like eight, nine acres, I think, uh, with that whole site.
We're not doing the bulldozers or nothing though?
Uh, not much, I mean, it's a flat site.
Well, like the other place.
But although, yeah, it's gonna be, like I said, this will be probably a fourth of what the cost was gonna be at Pleasant Run. But I, we won't know until, I'll tell you what we're doing. If you guys remember, we did a preliminary architect, the call of the park architectural report for the Pleasant Run site, um, and we was looking at the financial stability studies and all of that. This basically will be the same thing, but it'll just be a whole lot quicker and a whole lot cheaper. But before we get an actual number of the cost, that study, the engineers have to go in, look at the building, see what needs to be done, remodeling on all that. Um, and once that number is done, then we will come back and say, hey, this is what it's gonna look like, this is what it's gonna cost. Uh, USDA, I've talked to USDA, they will fund a community facilities project at that location. They liked it, um, so. I, I was super excited about it, like I said, cause it's potentially half the cost and probably a whole lot quicker on the timeline. Seeing as though we already got a building actually there that we would just be rehabbing opposed to new construction.
I know a lot of young kids that play baseball out there at the park, now they've been wanting a batting cage. They have to go, a lot of their parents had to take them, one can forty, had to take them all the way to Jackson to practice, you know, and they got a batting cage. It was a little like that, that's, that's good, good deal.
I make a motion that we allow mayor to continue, continue to investigate this project.
Second.
Alright, I have a motion of Ms. Ray and Ms. Miller, is there any more questions? Uh, Chris?
So on these ball fields, do you, do you know the size of what they would be?
I think it's two fifty, I think. I think it's a little.
And so, I heard about this part, this building became vacant, so it would be the building in like forty acres with it?
No, building is like eight, nine acres.
Okay.
Now, there's hundreds of acres of land that the state owns out there on sixty-four on both sides, but I don't, that, that parcel right there is like eight, nine acres, that one parcel. Now, if you look back over here, let me borrow this, right here, that's a cemetery there, that won't be a part of it, um, but it's just that area there for this.
Do, do we know how much it was? I want to say a hundred and fifty, it was like nine hundred, seven thousand?
I've heard numbers from five hundred thousand to a million to nine hundred thousand, none of it's been official. Uh, they are doing an appraisal. So I, I don't know what that official number is, um, I've heard a lot of numbers, but um, I'll say General Ross didn't give me a apps, uh, exact number. Once they, once it gets from the, the military department of, the, the military side, then it goes to the buildings commission. And it's, the state has a long process before they uh, give a final number of what that's gonna be, but I don't know what that is.
Right.
When I do get it then, we'll be back at this point.
Gotcha. So if we, if we explore this, would we still explore something at the existing ball fields? Cause I know right now, some of the seating and stadium, you know, it's, it's really a mess.
Yeah.
So I, I definitely love this idea, I just definitely don't wanna forget about uh, doing something out there because the seats are, you know, the concrete's all busted up and really needs a whole lot of work.
So what we, of this project, we, whether we do this or do it at the Pleasant Run site, that other, the current ball fields we have, we've always said that's the part, the remodel will automatically be a part of that.
Okay.
So um, short answer, yes, um, even and I will say this, if we don't move forward with this, we still need to remodel and upgrade what's out there.
Gotcha.
But it's just a lot cheaper and easier to do it all at one, one time. So when we move forward with this project or the Pleasant Run project or whatever project it is, that'll be a part of it too.
And the uh, parking spaces, a, a lot of this is gonna be very similar to what was at Pleasant Run, right?
Yeah, it's, I, I mean, identical, almost only thing that's not included in that is the uh, soccer fields. But like I said, this is very preliminary, like they literally just threw this together for me to give y'all something tonight, but uh, I'm sorry, I keep taking your paper. But there's land here that could be used. This right here, this site plan could change, you know, completely change again, but it's enough space out there. Our biggest focus was the gymnasium side and what it would look like on the fields, but um, that's, I can guarantee you that's gonna change, but that's just an idea of what we could do.
Gotcha, thank you.
The uh, players, I'm sitting in the players of run, what we was talking about, building a new building for that, it was running at?
Forty million?
It was closer to the, we never got the final price, they were still, we still been working through it, but it was closer to fifty million.
Fifty million?
Uh-huh.
So I was definitely know that.
But going to half of that now?
That's me, now, now, I, hold on, that's my number, but I don't, I'm not.
I know, but we saying roughly twenty-five million from fifty to twenty-five million, maybe?
Maybe, yeah, I'm not a contractor. Yeah, so I'm just saying, it's a lot cheaper, this project would be a whole lot cheaper than what that was. And that was the first number, now that, that, that original building was a Taj Mahal, half the stuff that they, the engineers put in it. We could've cut out a lot of that stuff, but we, we were going through that process when this project has came about, so.
So the uh, possible, the twenty, I'm just gonna say twenty-five million, that's gonna include the building and whatever we add on to this, like the?
Ball field.
Playground, future gymnasium, gymnasium, that's gonna include the twenty-five of you?
That number is what I threw out, so I have no clue. Uh-huh, let me get the report back from the engineers, cause I don't want you to hold me to that next month. And if it's twenty-six, then you gonna fuss, cause I'm a million off, so let me get that number, but it's significantly cheaper.
Well, actually, I'm gonna fuss at twenty-five, but okay.
Well, we, let me get a number for you to fuss at, let me get a number first.
Let me get a number, you might surprise me.
I, I have no clue, but I know uh, the rehab will be a lot cheaper than building new and the dirt work and stuff that we would have to do at Pleasant. I don't know what that number is, that's what I'm asking for this tonight, to go and see what that looks like.
So the gymnasium that we have here at the city hall would be moved out to the, what's, what's gonna happen to the gymnasium?
Well, I would like to see us do with that is turn that into a civic center events that we can host conferences and events in that building there.
And where the gym they?
Yeah, and where the gym is, yeah, uh-huh, and all the parks and rec stuff will be moved out to the armory. So uh, basketball, pickleball, walking, all the recreational stuff, their office, all that move out. And we will just do a rehab on this where we can host nice sized events, you know, that we can have a auditorium that can hold two, three hundred people.
Are you still talking to YMCA?
Yes, sir, uh-huh.
Uh, in regards to this building here?
Yeah, we toured that, what, a week or two ago, I guess.
So they still willing to donate or not donate?
They wanna be here. Now, what that looks like financially, we haven't made it that far, cause we hadn't made actually a number yet, but they want to have a presence involved. We just gotta find a space for them.
Is that uh, the YMCA or is that the uh, boys and girls club?
No, uh-uh.
They two different?
No, sir, it's two different, this is YMCA.
Okay.
Hey mayor, so as far as the Pleasant Run Park um, project, so I, I think it was this time last year, whenever we approved, you know, for them do the study and everything. And we never, I guess, heard back, or they're still in the process, I don't know, that's not on anyone here, that's?
No, we ha, we have the original, the preliminary architect report, we have that number. We was working, we was looking at the financial, the financial feasibility side of it. So once we do this project, what does that look like? Tax money, tournaments, how much money will be generated from something like this? That's what we was waiting on to get back.
How long do you think it'll take?
We got something preliminary, we have a preliminary report from them that we got, was it a week ago, like, like about like sometime last week?
Okay.
When we got that, and then we were, I was gonna move forward to present that to y'all this month, but that's when this came.
Gotcha.
All that sort of came up at the same time.
So it's gonna be quicker than, 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 than what the last one was, cause we already got the information?
Oh, yeah, yeah, we still, uh, cause that information won't change.
Right.
Uh, basically, the, the, the part, that report will change because of the location, uh, that will change, that amount will change. Before the feasibility side of it, what we're looking at was those, those numbers will still be the same. So once we get, and that was our requirement from the USDA on the community facilities part. We had basically, whatever we go to borrow, whether it's a million, ten million, twenty million, whatever it is, we're gonna have to have something to show that we're gonna be able to afford and pay the note on whatever that project or whatever that is. That's where the feasibility study part.
Gotcha, okay, thank you.
Where any grants be coming in on this, or we applying for any grants for?
Uh, no, not, not yet, right now, we're just, uh, the, they are, you could say the community facilities grant, it's a mix, but it's gonna mainly be a loan or so than it is with USDA. I, we haven't made it to that point yet.
But there are possible?
Now YMCA will probably, yeah, will look for grants that they could put, put towards it.
And one of the things about grants though too is, you know, it's a twenty-four to thirty-six month process, you know, depending on how long they give us to buy this. You know, we may not have enough time to wait on a grant, as far as the building wise, you know, you know, I don't know what the time, timeline is, but them grants are gonna take a few years at least.
Any other question? We have a motion by Ms. Ray and a second by Ms. Miller to continue studying on this, on moving forward, uh. If not, is there, I guess all in favor say, oh no, I'm sorry, we gotta vote up there. I'm sorry Mick, I didn't have this on the agenda for you, but you got it wrecked.
Yeah, I'll just pass that one around. Caroline swapped it out.
Oh, I just gonna close the vote, Will.
I just hope we don't make it to meet.
Uh, okay.
I don't, I definitely did not vote no, I voted yes. I don't know what changed, I definitely voted yes.
Well, Mark, Mr. Williams, yeah, and so uh, Mr. Woods also. Thank y'all, uh, Will, I'll keep y'all posted. I really think that's gonna be a real good project for our community.
Me too.
I'm sorry. I had approved the minutes, I sure didn't, I just put a X to it, I'm sorry. Thank you for that, Mr. Wood. Uh, go back to the approval at the, at October council minute, council meeting, is there any corrections or changes to those minutes? Is that motion will approve? Motion by Mr. Woods, second by Mr. Williams, all in favor, cash or, okay, cash or votes?
I'm gonna get you on your batteries, uh.
Me too. Motion, Karen, uh, moving on to public comments, do we have anybody? Anybody would like to know, okay? Alright, uh, go to our standing committee reports. On the electric, BEA met on October twenty-eighth, approved the fiscal year audit, the audit was clean with no findings. Approved the construction of fiber warehouse to be completed by August of twenty twenty-five. Uh, this part, part of this will be paid by state grant funds, approved the building project of BEA headquarters to start in twenty twenty-six. And you have the fiber update, that they will be closed also on the twenty-eighth and twenty-ninth. That concludes the uh, electric, now we move on to the utility, Mr. Jimbo.
Good evening, council, mayor.
Evening.
Evening. My report is the filing, the utility board met, we met November sixth and uh, we approved contract track with light wave energy. That's uh, we're going with solar at the water plant. And uh, I think it's gonna be a big, big savings and it's, the payback's gonna be approximately eleven years. It's gonna be a substantial uh, payback on electricity. Also, we approved, uh, we got an altitude valve down here at the Lauderdale tank, this out, we gotta replace it, it's out of date. Uh, we also have it washed out on one twenty-five on a natural gas line, we're repairing that as we speak uh, this week. And we received the bids on the uh, ARP projects from uh, the water sewer. And it was requested by A two H, went before the board and the mayor, that we reject the bids because of, it was only one contractor to bid it on, both of them, each, each, uh, separate contractors, but these contractors are all swamped with this money and it's holiday, end of the year, so they're thinking, and we can do this legally, uh. Re, rebid it next, next year, where be more competition, be less fees. And we went with that, that suggestion, cause after, next spring, uh, they'll be back hungry again, ready to bid. And then our gas prices are sixty-five cents again for November, which is really great. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Miller, I will say, thank the utility board, they uh, when we brought this solar discussion, that's been, we first started it probably before COVID, I think. And then we picked it back up and I'm excited about, about that for the uh, utility board, the water plant to see some clean energy going in, saving quite a bit of money and it's, it's gonna be.
Boiler energy was, was forward too, yeah, they were really forward, so.
Y'all see some solar panel, we'll probably do a big presentation and all that stuff for that.
Yeah, it'll be set up on the side, out there on the, on the north side of the plant, but it, it'd probably go in, what, next year?
Yeah.
Probably discussion.
We had a lot of means, had a lot of questions, but I wanna say, just say publicly, thank to gym utility board for going through all that, so, excited about that. Alright, uh, next, the fire chief was not in today, uh, but y'all have his report, um, if you have any questions, just let me know. And be parent for his uh, family also, on the loss of his uh, nephew. Uh, police, uh, Chief Jones.
Good evening, everyone.
Evening.
Uh, my cop, my uh, report is as follows. Calls for service, six hundred and twenty-two, two hundred and six citations, twenty-six accidents, seven injury, nineteen was property damage only. Forty-one arrests, four of them were juveniles, thirty-seven was adults. Special events, we had uh, Western C investigative training here at uh, the training facility. And also we did nineteen saturations, assisted with the barbecue fest and forty-five hours of training.
Chief Jones, how's the task force doing? Sorry, how's the task force doing?
Uh, far as?
As far as, how is it doing?
I mean, they're, well, I mean, they're making seizures and arrests and uh, getting guns off street and stolen cars.
Awesome, that's what we wanna hear.
I sent the exact numbers to the mayor, I don't have them with me. But he has exact numbers so far to take.
It's going real good, uh.
Yeah, the community definitely uh, has been talking a lot about it, it's a very thing, uh, very, very positive.
Told a thirty-three ships worked between August twenty-third through September thirtieth. Hundred and one citations, six arrests for driving on revoked or suspended license, ten felony drug arrests, two arrests for outstanding warrants, one DUI, one misdemeanor drug arrest, six firearm seize, one stolen vehicle recovered.
Awesome, awesome. Did we get rid of the canine? We still got it?
We still have it, so we're trying to make arrangements to try to.
You want them?
No, no.
Hopefully try to sell them.
No, absolutely not.
Yeah, hopefully try to sell them.
You taking the pistol, Memphis, with shooter box.
You know what, we, nah, that's okay.
Y'all can use them.
Uh, Chief, uh, Chief, uh, I, I, I want to commend you and the opposed department on the uh, outstanding job that y'all done with the shooting that happened over there on Naylor, I think y'all got a couple of people arrested.
Yes, sir, it was a.
So I just wanna commend you, you know, for doing a, you know, good job of arresting so quick.
Thank you.
You know, and I just don't want that noticed, you know, be, you know, I notice, you know.
Well, once.
I wanna let you know you're doing a good job.
Once again, we figured out what, where he went, we recovered the gun and what car got in custody, they did it on the road in front of a sky cop.
Right, I think I caused you on the two, his placement went that wide. But I, I do wanna, I do wanna commend the police department and.
Thank you.
And let the officers know, we appreciate it.
I'll pass it out.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Alright, see, our next parks and rec, Mr. Ford.
Parks and Recreation Department reports on the following. We completed the installation of three new launch pads, or they call tee pads as well, out on the disc golf course at Pleasant. Our youth basketball, uh, six to ten year old, that's two leagues, six, seven, and eight, and the nine and tens. Their registration ended Friday, so we're preparing to start that season. Adult volleyball registration, it actually has ended and they started the games on this past Friday, so we have four adult teams. And lastly, uh, I just wanna say we had a great time taking some kids that uh, have participated in our youth basketball league. We partner with the Memphis Grizzlies, uh, with the junior Grizzlies program. We were able to take thirteen kids down to uh, Memphis Grizzlies game, they played uh, the Brooklyn Nets. And at halftime, our kids actually uh, got on the court and played a scrimmage game and.
That was good.
They were really excited, so.
That turned out real good, whoa, the score, tell us, I'm a.
Two to zero.
Them kids got down on the head court and was scared.
They panicked, yeah.
They made one shot the whole halftime.
That's a lot of pressure.
So you said.
Ball of the one had zero.
Well, no, we, we played, uh, two kids, or it was two sets, yeah, both teams.
Oh, okay, 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 got you, got you.
But that was a, a lifetime experience and then that.
Yeah, someone probably never been there.
Right, right.
Especially on the floor playing.
Yeah, on that floor and they had, of course, the crowd, uh, it was a, it was an actual game, it wasn't preseason, and so this was a game and on the way down, they were able to be right there before halftime buzzer and to see the NBA players, it really uh, was something.
Oh, great.
That's my report.
Thank you, Mr. Ford.
Thank you.
Next, street sanitation.
Mr. Mayor, members of council. Department of Ed, Public, Jerry Mayfield, follow street sanitation, this is my report. Uh, we've been doing our weed, weed eating in my own as usual, getting all that done, we got a total tons of landfill. We had residential's hundred and forty-four point three three, commercials two hundred and eighty-two point zero four, for a total of four hundred and twenty-six point three seven. Uh, that's trash, taking out uh, bulky and everything too. Uh, preparing downtown for the barbecue fest and the music, we got all that done, I hope it went over well, hope everybody enjoyed it. Uh, we started hanging our Christmas lights for our uh, small town big Christmas, getting all that together, getting our lights up and getting everything back going. And our Bucky items has ended for the year, that's my report.
Thank you, Mr. Wood.
Thank y'all.
So that means anybody that got both the items actually gonna begin to notice from Mr. Walker, cause there's a lot of folks that got it out, I don't know if they missed the date or what. Uh, live red, Ms. Jessica.
Good evening, everyone.
Evening.
Um, October report, uh, we took in financial nine forty-eight eighty-five in revenue, we had a total of eleven live programs. We had a total of eleven live programs with two hundred and eighty-eight total participants, we had one hundred and ten in passive programs with the estimated October patronage of nine hundred and forty-two. We have twelve meeting room bookings with fifty-two guests. We had one thousand seven hundred and sixteen total, uh, materials circulated, three hundred and forty-two computer users, three thousand five hundred and eight Wi-Fi users. Six hundred and sixty-seven Reed users, twenty people visit the history room, uh, one microfilm user, two history room scanner. Fifty-four materials circulated in history room, twenty interlibrary loan borrowed, and twenty, I mean fifteen interlibrary loan loaned, that's my report.
I need the mayor, council, you should have a copy of my report. Uh, building consultations, five, building permits written, two, building inspections, two, plumbing inspections, one. Mechanical inspections, one, safety inspections, one, certificate of occupancy, one, and cert, uh, courtesy notice issued, twenty. That concludes my report.
Good evening. My report is as follows, uh, I think mayor actually announced this last month, but it happened within the month of October. Graduated with a certification in Tennessee economic development, uh, we hosted a John Denver tribute at the Louise Theater. I attended the Alabama Mississippi Tennessee Rural Tourism Conference and assisted with the Bolivar barbecue blowout. We have also since then held, uh, the last Live at the Louise event, uh, which was the Gary Goins Group, and it was a fantastic show. Thank you for those that, uh, came out and supported, uh, every month on that, that, uh, we had some fantastic entertainment, uh, come across that stage, and we're looking forward to doing it again next year, and I will probably say this again in January, but, uh, I just want to publicly appreciate, uh, the other department heads who come alongside me and the mayor in all of the events that we do, um, small town big Christmas, I, I can come up with all the great ideas and, uh, put a plan in place, but I'm a one-man crew, so I have to depend on all the other department heads in putting everything up and getting everything going, and I just wanna let them know and let you know how much I appreciate them and all their hard work in getting it done for us.
Alright, thank you, Mr. Hill. Alright, that concludes the standing committee reports, uh, no old business, we move on to new business approvals, uh, bid purchase on the pavilion at Sand Beach Lake. Um, I don't know if you guys remember, we talked about, we did the, this is all still under the LPRF grant, but we did a separate bid for the pavilion, cause we could get it cheaper if we just bid it directly straight opposed to letting the com, uh, contractor, when the contractor buy it, they add ten, twenty percent markup. So we just separated this from the bid, uh, like we did the amphitheater when we bought that, so what this is, is for, what's the total, so hun, hundred and thirty-eight, I'm sorry, man. Hundred and fifty-two thousand three eleven, um, that includes them shipping it here and, um, getting it ready for the, uh, contract. So this is under the LPRF grant, and it'll go out at the, at Sand Beach Lake. And, I'm sorry, go ahead.
So we already got the money for this?
Yes, sir, I just have to approve the bid, we just have to approve the bid.
Did we get any more bids, or this is the one we
This is the only, this is the only bid we got, they're the only ones that make those pavilions like that, that fits in the plans. If this was in the actual plan, like I said, we just took the engineers, it was cheaper for us to get it directly, cause we got it taxes in. And we, we didn't have to, uh, the contractor, if they ordered it, they would've charged us the order. Okay, who, did you, did you make a motion, William?
Yeah.
Okay, Chris made a motion, I don't know what y'all was saying, did y'all was saying, second?
Well, I said second, but somebody else.
Motion by Mr. Williams, second by Mr. McKenna, uh, if you would cash a vote. Motion care, uh, before we move on, just let y'all know, if y'all had an opportunity, right by the lake, they have started, uh, the boat ramp. So if y'all have any questions, uh, if you hear anybody in the community that asking about it, that's what's going on, they have, um, started the boat ramp now. Once the boat ramp is completed, they'll be moving to the amphitheater, I think is next, right, I think amphitheater is next, and pavilion will be out of that, but they're starting it, and so after three years, it finally, we finally got the, got to this point, so, uh, um
When do we think it's gonna be completed?
It should be the first of the year, first of next year, on spring, so, once this completed, well, our goal is to, uh, have all this ready by spring of next year, then we can start pedal boats rentals, kayak, canoes, uh, events there at the lake that will, we can have the stage there. Pavilion be able to have another place for people to have outdoor events, whether it's birthday parties, or families, or whatever, all, so all the plans that we announced years ago, we finally get to a point, um, we've just been honestly waiting on state contract is really what we've been waiting on this whole time, we were awarded the grant, like you mentioned earlier, it takes a year sometimes to get the actual comeback, c- contract back from the state, so we at that point now, and we'll see some movement down there, um, excited about that, so.
I went through that, they, they working on it also, I didn't know they had them three restrooms out there down there, so
Yeah, so, that, uh, that building there on the side, you could, we got it, we had another tourism grant that covered the cost of rehab on that, the paint, uh, flooring and, uh, those restrooms. Um, those outdoor restrooms out there is installed, so people be able to use restroom, we have, uh, events, and when they go to do kayak canoe rentals and stuff like that, the dive shop and all that, they'll be able to have those restrooms, the access to shower, and one.
I know one, wow, I saw a handicap, I didn't know what it was.
Um, so it's, it's gonna be nice down there, and then the pavilion will have restrooms on them, also.
That'd be good, on the other side.
Alright, uh, next, uh, we have approval of plans of service for annexation, uh, at the Watson Forum. If you can pass that down, I'm, I'm sorry that I didn't, I should've gave you this to care best for y'all to have this in y'all package, but I, I didn't think about it, I, I know everybody don't probably know what the Watson Forum is, we've been talking about it in city hall so long. Uh, what this, uh, is, it's a parcel of almost, I think it's right at three hundred acres of land, that's, um, get, so I can give y'all s- some idea of what we're looking at. That's Highway sixty-four, if you see that big square to the bottom right rectangle where it says Lucy Black Road, that's our industrial park. And then if you see where, uh, if you're familiar where the EMS building is, Hill's Carpet is directly behind that, and it's adjacent to, right there, adjacent to our industrial park. And what this basically is, we've got an option, industrial board, we have an option with, uh, the Watson family, and that's what I was referring to as the Watson Forum. Uh, we, to build, uh, industrial site out there, so all we're doing now is getting stuff prepared, um, opposed to waiting to I say waiting, most of the time when you have an industry come in, this stuff is, they want this stuff done, they don't wanna go through the and, uh, adding it to the city, adding the utilities and zoning, all that stuff, so this parcel of land, this is the biggest parcel of industrial land in southwest Tennessee. And this puts us ahead of a whole lot of communities having this land on the option, so what we're doing now is annexing it in the city. Um, so we'll be able to get tax revenues off of it, once a industry actually lands here, so basically what we have to do to do that, we'll have to approve the plan of services, y'all did get that, the plan of services here. Mr., uh, Watson is, um, signed over to get this annexed. What we will do once, in the event that this property does not sell, it will be D N X and put back in the county. Um, I don't see that happening, honestly, I mean, I, I don't know whether it be a year or two years or five years from now, but a parcel of land that being with the utilities that we have out there, it's just only a matter of time before we see some large in- industrial prospect out there.
Is there, like, a limit of time that we?
Just on the option, the option I think is two years, and it, it renews every, two years, no, I'm sorry, five years, it's a five-year option, and we renew it every five years. Um, but this is not costing us anything, we're just, we're just annexing it.
We'd be ready in case of being factors.
Um, so, that's what this is, and we have to approve this, uh, plan of services, basically how we plan to get water out there, how we do, and we're already we already been working out there anyway now with utilities and stuff, so, um, I'm excited about this parcel, that was a big years ago was the industry that looked to, well, I guess I could say that, I don't know if I can or not, if I do, oh, well, but to be in when Jackson was gonna actually get on this spot, probably fifteen, twenty years ago, and they end up going to Jackson instead of them, so this is a very good parcel of land, and I'm excited that we've able to get option on it, so, but that's what that is, the plan of service.
Uh, so do we have water service and sewage service out there now?
It's out on the industrial park, you see, uh
It is.
It's in the industrial park, it's not right, it's not, it's two of it, it's not actual in that parcel right there, Jim, it's not in that, so it's not in there, is it?
So we got to, we got to put that water and sewage out there.
Water, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, okay.
Now, but we won't do that until we actually have a tenant there, so, cause we don't know where they will want, want, but
So move.
Yeah, so move. I have a motion by, uh, Ms. Ray, a second by, uh, um, I was looking, I think she said mostly, uh Uh, there any other questions on that? Alright, cash or votes?
Can I ask a question on that note?
Yeah.
What is the status of, um, the wall?
Hold on, motion care, um, the, they have purchased the building, um, they, they have been, so we're inclu, I'm including the emails they have back and forth with the state, so the building has been purchased, they, I, they were supposed to be breaking ground, I don't know if they have a date set. They have talked to some different people in town that has actual warehouse buildings that they can start moving stuff in, um, I think they ha, I don't know for sure. I know they had one building out in the county industrial park, they was talking to a gentleman about, about starting to move their stuff down, uh, first of the year, so that was the last official thing I ever come up with.
Oh, yeah, could you give me some update, um, out there by, no, I can't think of the name of the road, now Chase, somebody down through there. Uh, out there by what Messenger, Glenn Messenger Church.
I see you doing.
Yeah, I guess that's what you call it.
Yeah, I see, we, so we got a grant on that, they will start construction, uh, it's not gonna be construction, it's gonna be the, um, for electric, get the, uh, wiring and stuff put back in. Uh, if y'all, and any, any of y'all that would like to go, call me so I can take y'all out there and I can show y'all around, but the, while the building was vacant, there was a gentleman uh, that was, a gentleman that took the copper out, I just say it like that, um, and he left a big mess for what, Mr. Walker, a couple hundred dollars worth of copper, uh, so
Good boy, man.
Yeah, uh, he, but anyway, we, the grant, we did receive a grant to do that rehab on that, we have a couple of prospects on that, uh, on that property, we nothing found yet, so, but I'm excited, it's looking real good, obviously.
What are we gonna do with all the stuff that's inside of it, I know whenever me and you went months ago, uh, there is full
It's still there, hopefully, the tenant that move in will, usually tonight, we'll, we'll load it up and take it to the scrapyard. But right now, we haven't touched anything because of the stuff in there could be used for, you know.
Got you.
Um, moving on to the next thing, uh, approval for IT backups, and, um, IT backups and what is cybersecurity. I was looking at Mick, cause this is more in his warehouse than mine, uh, what we, we have, so these were not closed bids, cause these are from, this is considered a professional service. Um, and we got, we got three, um, we got three proposals from three different companies. And I give y'all the overview, but basically, I can't answer any of these questions when it come to IT, all I know is, is backups and cybersecurity safety. That's all I can say, anything passed?
Was this something that we were looking to do, or this is something that was just, like, kinda brought to us?
They, so we have, uh, they started a grant, and they started us, was it last year, starting doing that stuff, were making us get in compliance with all of this, and, uh, V three, that's, I'll say, one of the, the company I'm saying recommend, they're partnered with T M L, and they have always talked to us about getting backups. But here lately, the federal government has made it requirement for us to do, do this, so basically, that's what's sort of fast forwarding it, um, but I
And so this would be grant covered by grant?
Well, no, well, let me, let me get to that, and I think I can answer all that. Yeah, there's some real big numbers, and I didn't, I asked Mick, does this cost that much, I thought just buying USB cables on it, put it on Jump Drive. But, yeah, real big number, so, we have three proposals, and I'll say the three propos, proposals we have, one is from V C three. One is from C Spire, one is from Thank God, I'll just give you the numbers, and then I'll tell you what me and Mick's recommendation is.
I'm sorry, V three and C Spire.
V C three, uh-huh, C Spire, and Thank God.
Oh, Thank.
Uh, um, so the price, the yearly prices for these, V C three's yearly price is eighty-nine thousand two nineteen sixty-four. C Spire's price for this is ninety-two thousand eight thirty-four sixty-four. Thank God's price was two oh seven three seventy-three ninety-two.
Two oh seven?
Three seventy-three ninety-two.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I said, let's just take our chances, I hope nobody's tapped into it, but I don't know that that's really the wise thing to do, a lot of cities have really, we've been blessed, I say that we haven't had any major attacks, I say we, the biggest hack we have is our social media account, the post share cry for three A's, uh, when they hacked our social media account. But I'm recommending us go with V C three, and the reason why, I told all these, we did not, I didn't, we didn't budget any of this, um, and it's one of them things it's like insurance, it's one of, you can take your risk and not buy it and save the money, and if you never have to use it, fine, but in the event that you do then you wish you had've had it, um, but V C three has offered to give us the first, the rest of this budget year free, where we will only have to pay the setup fee. And their setup fee was, I think, eleven, eleven thousand four twenty-four, we will only have to pay the setup fee, they will give us the rest of this budget year free. And there is a grant that they're pretty sure, he told me that he could not confirm one hundred percent that we would get the grant, but they feel strongly that most of the rural communities that apply do get the grant funding, in the event that we get the grant funding, then we won't have to pay for anything. But if we don't, July next budget year, we would have to budget that eighty-nine thousand in there for these, uh Eighty-nine thousand, if we go with the V C three, that was the cheapest one, that was the cheapest one, and like I said, he offered to give it to us the first the rest of, I say the, six months is basically what we're looking at, we give us six months, uh, free, um, under the guidance that we, he would, they would be applying for a grant with our, uh, support with, like Mick, I wouldn't be doing anything, but they'll be working with Mick on getting that, cause I don't have a clue what in this stuff is. Um, and we going with that, so that's what my recommendation is, but, um, did that answer all the questions?
Yeah, cause when I sent that in the email, I was a little
Says, says
I didn't know we had the money, that's all I
I just, I, I, well, Mick will tell you, I was like, ain't no way that's what this costs, cause I thought seven thousand a year would be plenty, but no.
What does it entail, like, like exactly, for those who, who ain't tech? Me, you wanna give us the gist of what this entails?
Twenty-four seven, uh, monitoring of all of our firewalls, uh, inbound detection, looking for any, uh, anomalies coming through. Basically, it's just full cyber protection for the city. It's being required now, i- it's not something we can just say, well, we're just not gonna do it. Uh, federal government, state government are requiring us to do this, so, something we're gonna have to do. Luckily, there are grants available for it, and I think they're pretty sure we're gonna get a grant which will cover this, so, or at least first two or three years.
I'm guessing if something happens and we got them, there's some reassurance, we'll get some of it back, or
Uh, yeah, they'll be backing up continuously, so if we were to have an event, we would be able to be back up and online within a few hours' time.
Got you. V C three's at all, all of the conferences, and I know that we go out with them a lot and stuff, and, um, so they're very informative, and I know them, so.
On the recommendation of the mayor, and also, it's being cheap, cheaper. The cost is cheaper, so I'm gonna make a motion that we go with the eighty-nine, with the mayor's recommendation also being the lowest bid. That's, that's the word I was trying to find, lowest bid.
You finally got that.
I finally got it, yeah.
We got a motion by Mr. McKenna, and second, uh, by Ms. Millen, to go with V C three, if you would cash a vote. Thank you, motion care, uh, they will be getting with Mick to send all that stuff, uh, 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 next we have the approval of cert, certificate of compliance for a bottle shop on Main located at five sixty-nine Main Street, uh, Mr. Christian Hale will be the owner of that, on, he's Mister Christian Howell will be the owner of that, oh, he's the owner and applicant for that uh. Uh buil- business there, they've done the, all of the backgrounds through Chief Jones, he signed off on that as well as uh. Mister Watkins, but Christian is here, um he meets, they meet all the approvals, my recommendation is to approve it, but if y'all have. Any questions for Mister Howell. Or all, all nations church used to be, or uh some refer to it the garden center, I don't remember the garden center.
So it's gonna be um.
You can come forward, Mister.
It's gonna be a liquor store?
Yes, sir, yes, ma'am, I'm sorry.
It's gonna be a liquor store.
Okay, so when I get my hair done, it could be, I just get up.
Oh, we'll be right next door. Hopefully.
They probably break it over there to you.
He own the uh liquor store out there, Top Shop, Top, not Top Shop.
That's actually my mother.
That's your mother?
Yeah.
I know, yeah, I know, okay, okay, alright, okay.
Anybody got any other question, anything, Mister?
What else, what else is gonna be in there, because that's a. That's a pretty good sized building, so I was.
I have no idea, we'll, we'll rent it out eventually, so. We, we probably end up renting out the other half.
You going to some part of the next part?
Oh, yeah, they used to have parties in there, didn't they, yes, they did.
Are there any other questions, now do you have approval for Mister Howell at the bottle shop on Main Street?
I make a motion that we approve.
Have a motion by Mister Golden, a second by Mister Brown, if you would cash your votes.
I think the pastor gonna pass. I don't know if you gonna say yes or not, your pastor. We waiting on you.
He gonna abstain for this.
Abstain, motion care. Bid opening for the police uh utility roof repair, we had some hail damage at the police department, uh so we got, I mean the bids? Uh we got two bids, uh this, I'll just say insurance is paying for this. The roof on the uh. Well, they, they got uh, they get insurance uh forty million, okay, this is. From Coal and Sons Roofing, Belton Springs, um total is four, uh forty-seven thousand two. Twenty-six sixty-seven, the first one, that's uh Coal and Sons Roofing. This is uh E Roof, Mister Wayne Chris. I don't know how to find the price, here we go, forty thousand seven ninety-five oh four.
That's Pete Chris's business.
Forty thousand seven ninety-five oh four from E Roof.
Okay.
And forty-seven thousand two twenty-six sixty-seven from Coal and Sons. Got a motion, Mister McKenna, go with E Roof, second by Mister Westwood, if you would cash your vote, please. You, we done paid for it already, monthly. Motion care.
No more.
I'm sorry, go ahead, uh Mister Wilson, you have some?
Yeah, so the washout across from Baker Glass, I drove past it earlier and it's washing out even more, do we ever figure out what's going on with that?
I have talked to T Dot, I've talked to uh Representative Wall and Representative Shaw both, their assistants have been talking, emailing back and forth, but. No, we, they haven't given me anything to say uh on what they're doing, but I did reach out to them um in Nashville about it, so I don't know what. What their plans are, but it's.
I bet that gentleman will be back here to tell us something about it, what's his name?
Mister Williamson, yeah, was there anything else?
I think that Sycamore, that big tree over there with, that lightning hit it, it rotten and limb falling off of it, they planning on cutting it down, I think it's over in front of Mister Wood's house.
Oh yeah, I talked to Mister Wood, the Lex Department is gonna top it out and cut it, we, our truck is not tall enough to cut it, the Lex Department is gonna, it's a couple of more they gonna do and. I talked to him, I guess about a, about a week or two ago, uh they're gonna come over there and top it for us and then we gonna take the rest of it out. So I'm just waiting on, waiting on them, um yeah, it's right there in, on, it's in the highway there, on Sycamore Street. Uh is there a motion to adjourn? Motion by Mister McKenna, second, second Mister Williams, all in favor, say yeah.